Okay, here we are. Good morning. It's our weekly Marion County Board of Commissioners meeting. It's Wednesday, October 12th, 2016. And we are here in the Senator Hearing Room at Courthouse Square, 555 Court Street Northeast, Salem. If you will join me, we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Most goodness.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So we have, nobody signed up for public comment this morning. Gordine, it's great to have you with us this morning. We know Christie's on a well-deserved trip, vacation someplace in the world. So it's good to have you. And Bruce, welcome.
Thank you.
Our first item of business, then we'll just move right into our consent calendar. We don't have a presentation scheduled, I don't believe.
So I believe it's my turn on consent, is that right?
It's long and it's-
It is. All right. And so are we removing an item from consent before we do that?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, I think there was a request to remove the item under Community Services for the appointment of members of the Children and Families Commission because that matter is dealt with later as an action item. Creating those honorary positions, so it seems more appropriate to appoint to those positions after they actually exist. So the request was to remove that one item and then deal with it and move it to the action calendar.
Right, well, Mr. Chair, I would move that we remove this item under Community Services from consent and place it on the action item under Community Services.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second to move, or to remove it from the consent calendar and move over to the action calendar. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
So now, Mr. Chair, I would move the consent calendar, which includes the following items. Under Business Services, approve an order recommending Marion County's use of Clackamas to Chutes, Jackson, and Lane Counties as consistent comparables for market review studies. Approve a recommendation to change exemption status and adjust upward pay grade for safety specialist class code number 358. Under Clerk's Office, approve an order appointing Paul Allen, Jennifer Sasaki, Gerald Baumann, Richard Manning, Don Miller, Micah Moskowitz, Bob Riggi, and Sue Thompson to the Board of Property Tax Appeals, lovingly known as BOPDA, with terms ending June 30th, 2017. And under Juvenile, approve Amendment Number Two to the Contracts for Services with Justice Benefits, Inc., to add 5% for the Oregon Kids Placement Data Entry. And under Tax Office, approve an order advancing tax levies to small taxing districts pursuant to ORS 311-392.
I'll second it with just one comment on the BOPDA people. That's a big task every year and so appreciate their efforts and it really matters, giving people a chance to appeal or reconsider their tax situations.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the consent calendar. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Okay. So move into our action items. Do we want to have our Community Services item as number four, or do we want to do it first, the one we just moved over there?
I think it needs to be four.
Okay. Just to clarify that. So our first action item is to consider approval of a proclamation designating October 16th through the 22nd as National Hands and Words Are Not for Hurting Week in Marion County. And we have a couple of guests to do a presentation for us today. Welcome, Katie.
Thank you.
Good to have you with us.
Well, for those of you who don't know me, I'm Miss Marion Polk County's Outstanding Teen, Katie Larson, and this is my partner, Lauren Studer.
Welcome, Lauren.
She was the founder of the First Annual Suicide Prevention Week at South Salem High School, and we're so excited to introduce this to you on behalf of Ann Kelly, the founder of the Hands and Words Are Not for Hurting Project. So basically who we are, I'm the Vice President of this club that we've decided to do at South Salem High School, and Lauren is the President, so she's going to tell you a little bit about our club that we're doing.
So we started a club and our club's-
Lauren, just go ahead and pull that right, there you go.
There we go. So we just started a club at South Salem High School, and our club's main objective is to support our student body and further into the community as well. We want to put on several events throughout the year on how we can support our student body, and our first event being the Suicide Prevention Week for its second year and making this an annual event.
So this is our timeline of what we've done to, you know, raise awareness for suicide prevention and the Hands and Words Are Not for Hurting Project. On Saturday, October 8th, we did the Out of the Darkness Walk at the Riverfront, which is suicide prevention. There were over 2,700 people from Salem and Portland attending this event, and it was an amazing event because I got to speak in front of the crowd and lead the honor bead ceremony, which recognizes all of those people who have lost someone to suicide. And it was just amazing to see how the community can come out and support each other in that event.
The second thing that we have started is the pre-orders of our suicide prevention shirts, and we are partnered with West Salem, so we have our own shirts, and we'll show those in a later slide of what our shirts look like. We started pre-orders last week, and we have sold over 40 shirts already. Our pickup time will be on Monday. Next week we'll start, and that's our actual Suicide Prevention Week and Hands Week at South Salem. And all of our varsity sports, their student sections will be purple out to show our community that we are coming together and supporting each other against suicide prevention.
Oh, and on Friday, the 21st, we have a home game against West Salem High School, in which we will all be wearing purple, both student sections, to show our support for this amazing cause. So this is the pledge that was created by Ann Kelly. It's the Hands and Words Are Not for Hurting pledge. It's usually said in most elementary schools, and it's, "I will not use my hands or my words for hurting myself or others."
And this pledge will be said at all the half times of the games to promote suicide prevention and also promoting the Hands Week. So this is just a few of our business sponsors that we reach out to in our community. You can see there are some families that have donated, some individuals, but a lot of companies that we reached out to. And in the past two weeks alone, we sent out business letters and raised over $2,500.
Wow, that's great.
And this is an amazing way to get our community involved, because the more we raise awareness for suicide prevention and mental health, the more the word gets out and we can help combat the tragedies that happen from suicide. So during our volleyball and soccer games during that week, the student sections will of course be in purple out, and we will ask the players to wear purple pre-wrapped in their hair, which is like a headband sort of thing. Just wearing the color purple signifies so much, because purple is that color that is not really, it's not attributed to anything. It's just, I don't know, how would you explain?
It's universal. It has no race, it has no gender, and it's something that all people can be a part of.
Yeah.
And during halftime, we will have the pledge, and we will also ask when the captains do the meeting and the coin flip at the beginning, that our teams bring the purple pre-wrapped to the other teams and ask them to participate as well, and tell them what we're doing at our school and try and bring it back to their school as well.
Good.
So the football game is our main event, as there's the highest attendance at that. The student section will be a purple out. We will be passing around a helmet during halftime if people wish to donate to suicide prevention so that we can continue this event at South after we graduate. Our cheerleaders have a giant poster at the beginning of our game, and it will be purple. We reached out to our art department, and they will be doing face paint at the game, and they will have primarily purple there. And all of the money that they earn by doing the face paint will actually go back to their art program and help them funding. And we will have purple roses, so they can give them to our principal to honor the students who have fallen before us. Roses are the way that South recognizes excellence and honoring other people.
This was kind of explaining what we will do at the football game as well. So the art department will receive half of the proceeds raised from face painting, and then the other half will go towards causes such as Hands and Words Are Not for Hurting, and also for the week that will be happening next year after we graduate. And Dutch Brothers is also a very important sponsor in our community for supporting us in this endeavor.
So this is our mission. You can see the quote above, and, "Given an hour to save the world, I would spend 55 minutes defining the problem and five minutes finding the solution." It's an Albert Einstein quote, and this is basically our mission. We need to start talking about the problem that is suicide and get people knowing that there are people there for them and supporting them, and then we can focus on the solution later. But the first thing is we need to address the problem and show support and come together, especially as students, reaching out to other students. It's a huge thing that hasn't happened very often, and people need to know that it's other students reaching out there for them.
And we have received so much outpouring support due to the loss of one of our own students earlier this year to suicide. So South is really excited to begin this program, and we have received so much support from the student bodies, staff, and of course, the Hands and Words Are Not for Hurting program. So I also want to talk to you about my platform, Not Okay is Okay Too: Mental Health for Teens. The Miss Marion Polk County's Outstanding Teen Program is part of the Miss America Organization that is a scholarship-funded, and we choose a platform when we start to compete on, to advocate for once we win. And I won in March of 2016. So sort of some things about my platform is that many teens struggle with mental health due to extraneous factors in and outside of school. Hands Week and Suicide Prevention are one important aspect of mental health. Mental health is such a broad subject that you can't really cover everything, but this is a project I was so excited to take a part of because it is very important. Many other health problems include anxiety, depression, epilepsy. This platform really kind of means a lot to me, because I personally struggled with mental health in a big way my sophomore and junior year. I was diagnosed with epileptic seizures in the most pivotal moments of my life. Like, at the time, I just got my license, I had to have it revoked because I was not safe to drive. But since then, I have learned how to take care of myself mentally and to be a voice for those who struggle with their own mental health. Everyone's journey is different. I'm not saying that mine is like what everyone goes through, but if we can advocate and raise awareness in our schools on how to combat unhealthy mental issues, then I believe that that can be one step forward in the right direction to help students and even small kids stay mentally healthy.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for your time.
Well, thank you for being here. And Commissioner, do you have some comments or questions?
Well, sure. Yes, thank you so much for being here. It sounds like you have a very well-organized, very ambitious agenda for getting the information out, and that is so great. I think that what you can do as peers with other youth is much more meaningful and probably has a lot more impact than adults, teachers, parents trying to tell students the same thing. So it's just so great what you're doing. Also want to commend you on your platform. That is such a wonderful thing to be about. Mental health has had so much stigma, and it's an issue that really touches a lot of people that we work with in Marion County. We actually oversee mental health services in Marion County for both children and for adults. And I think that what you talked about, sometimes it might be connected to a physical condition. Sometimes it's a chemical condition, and what we've learned is that a number of mental health conditions don't manifest themselves until late teens. So kids that are 16, 17, 18, 19 years old, all of a sudden find themselves in a situation where they could be hearing voices or, you know, being involved in something that it's just overtaking them, and they have no idea how to deal with it. They're ashamed of it. They don't want to talk about it. They don't reach out for help, and then they spiral downward. And then we see some of these situations that you read about in the news where kids are involved in things that are kind of above and beyond what they ever imagined they'd be involved in. So it's just such a profound issue, and I appreciate you bringing it to the forefront and sharing your personal story. I think that's really great. And we have passed a resolution or proclamation, I guess it's called, in Marion County ever since I started being county commissioner many years ago, and I think it's important for us each year to remind ourselves by taking the pledge and committing as a county. So we're very happy to do that, happy that you came today, that you could be a part of this.
Thank you.
Well, I don't know where to start, but I was very much impressed by your presentation and hope perhaps it can be spread and paper pick it up and get the word out. What a great project. It really matters. Certainly a sad subject, and you're concentrating on suicide. And I've had experiences sitting here thinking of four close people, and I always had that feeling that, the hindsight thing, like, gosh, why didn't I know there was a problem? How come I didn't recognize that? Could I have made any difference? In fact, my father, I won't tell the whole story, but he saw an old classmate, and I'll just say it like it was. He was drunk, and Dad decided not to go up, and I was with him, not to go up and say hello. Just, that's how it is. And the next day, he killed himself. And Dad carried that for a long time, like, why didn't I just go say hello? You know, what would that have hurt? But I tried to tell him it wasn't his fault, but that's how, it's how again in hindsight. So the one thing I try to do, and perhaps you can use it, is when I do recognize that somebody is struggling to just be available, I guess. But now, I have to make things funny out of everything, and the one thing that caught me out of this was the face painting. And I suddenly imagine Commissioner Cameron as a creepy, purple-painted clown. So if you could arrange that, I think that would be a vision people would remember.
Don't like clowns. We don't like clowns.
I was, I was going to be really nice this morning, but that just opened the door. So, no, just thank you so much for your presentation. As I was sitting here, and I know the subject is a very sensitive one, and I appreciate you, as Commissioner Carlson said, being the peer group that is leading others to say, this is okay to talk about, this is okay to be open. And I've had, seen, been a part of experiences in my family, my personal family, in mental health issues, and it's never fun, and we don't understand it, but we need to be there to support people. But there was a slide, and I'm not going to ask you to go back to it, but it had something about you're going to wear purple shirts, but you're going to have something in the hair. What was it? Purple?
Oh, pre-wrapped.
Pre-wrapped. That's what he needs for the game, is a pre-wrapped hair.
Yeah, so tied to my hair and my eyes. That'd be great.
We're so thankful you're here. We're going to go ahead, and I believe we're going to read the proclamation. Do we want to do that right now?
We'll probably need to make a motion to approve it.
Yeah, okay. So we'll, you can stay right there if you want while we do this, because we're going to take the pledge with you.
So Commissioner Cameron, Chair Cameron, I would make a motion that we do approve the proclamation that designates October 16th to 22nd, 2016, as National Hands and Words Are Not for Hurting Week in Marion County.
And I will second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion, second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, okay. We will now read the proclamation. Commissioner, would you like to start us again?
Sure. Just get the whole thing. "In the matter of proclaiming October 16th to 22nd, 2016, to be National Hands and Words Are Not for Hurting Week, proclamation, whereas a community without abuse and violence is a dream we all share, and whereas any form of mistreatment of another is abuse, and all people have the moral and legal right to live free of abuse and violence, and whereas each of us must come to understand that it is within our own, our personal power to choose not to use violence and abuse others to resolve conflict, and whereas we recognize that respect for ourselves and others is key to developing healthy relationships at every age and in all circumstances, and..."
"Whereas the principle of nonviolent resolution of conflict must be taught to our children and practiced within each of our families, and whereas verbal and emotional abuse can be just as damaging as physical violence to a person's self-worth, creating scars that are carried for the rest of his or her life, and whereas verbal abuse such as name-calling, insulting, and belittling frequently escalates into simple force like pushing, grabbing, or slapping, and the worst scenario is the escalation to rage, serious violence, and even murder, and..."
"And whereas the commissioners of Marion County, together with the communities around the county, the country, and overseas, recognize that Hands and Words Are Not for Hurting Project's pledge is an effective tool in abuse and violence prevention education. Now therefore, the Marion County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim the week of October 16th through 22nd, 2016, to be the 19th Annual National Hands and Words Are Not for Hurting Week in Marion County, and encourages all citizens of Marion County to join hands and hearts to unite as a family and a community to pledge, both privately and publicly, and we'll all say this together, I will not use my hands or my words for hurting myself or others." Dated this date, what is the date?
12.
The 12th day of October, 2016. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
And I've been wearing this now for, I think it was the first year, this is my third year, and I kept this on. And the only time it was off was when I was in Indonesia in June, a little boy on the sand wanted my bracelet, and I gave it to him, and I had to come back to the U.S. and get a new one. I don't know that he understood. I had an interpreter there trying to tell, I was trying to tell him what this bracelet meant, but hopefully he got that message and could share it with his friends in Indonesia. It was pretty cool. Thank you for what you're doing. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Now, you do know that's a pre-wrapped on.
It's a what?
[laughing]
A pre-wrapped. Is this the pre-wrapped that Sam's going to put it on?
Yeah, we want to see you put it on.
Oh, it's great to have you here today. Thanks for what you're doing. Okay, so we'll move on to our next action item. Under Business Services, consider approval of a recommendation to change the Ancillary Marketing Benefits Program Administration to Professional Benefit Services, PBS, effective January 1st, 2017. Justine Flora is here with us this morning. This is a good thing.
Good morning.
Thank you.
Well, I'm Justine Flora, and here I am again. And the last time I was here, we talked about changing the medical plan, and I left this meeting, or I left a meeting to come to this one, where we were implementing that program, and so far, so good. And as I mentioned at that last meeting, we were still working on the respondents to the RFP that went out at the same time as the medical carrier for the administration of our ancillary programs. And that includes the flexible spending accounts, both healthcare and dependent care, as well as the administration of our COBRA and retiree medical plans. So they handle all of those accounts. Currently being, currently we're using Benefit Help Solutions. And over the last few years, we have run into some service issues, some customer service issues, as well as some accuracy issues, where we've had to have them go back and make corrections to accounts. And that's really difficult when you're talking to a retiree who's been on a wonderful trip and then comes back and finds out that their health plan has been mucked up a bit. So that, we take that very seriously. So in doing this RFP, we had several respondents. We had two that stuck out as pretty, pretty good possibilities. We did some interviews and reference checks, and Professional Benefit Services, or PBS, really stood out to be a really good match for Marion County. The other one that we interviewed, they looked like a very good company, a very good program. However, the way they do their banking and other things really weren't going to meet what we needed a provider, as far as the array of services. And Professional Benefit Services really, we've got some really good references on them. And they're a local, family-owned Salem company, which is kind of nice for folks here, in that they're not only physically local, but they also operate very local. They were talking to us about, you know, sometimes with flexible spending, folks just drop by their office and pick up their reimbursement check instead of waiting for it to come in the mail, that kind of thing. And then they also have some nice high-techy things, too, you know, where they can do direct deposits for folks. They can, they've got a little phone app and things like that. So not only are they nice and local and have that small family feel, they're also keeping up technology with technology, and that really made us feel good about it. So what we'd like to do is, effective January 1, which is also when the plan year changes for these programs, to go ahead and change over from Benefit Help Solutions to Professional Benefit Services, and that's what I'm here to ask you for.
I do not have any questions, because we have talked about this, and we've heard about the RFP, and we heard about the pros and cons of the different respondents. And so now we're here at a place where we're actually being asked to approve, what are we being asked to approve? We're actually being asked to approve the recommendation to change our company from Benefit Health Solutions to Professional Benefit Services, right? So I'll just go ahead and make that motion, that the board approve the recommendation to change the Ancillary Marketing Benefits Program Administration to Professional Benefit Services, effective January 1, 2017.
I'll second it. That part about being able to stop by locally really appeals to me. I've had a little trouble, one, remembering passwords, and two, having the information you're supposed to send them, and it's taken quite a while. It's my fault, but I like that you're sitting here. Take care of this.
Not having to dial into a computer or something to actually talk to somebody. Yeah, okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Okay, thank you, Justine, for your work on this.
Thank you very much.
Next up on our action items is under Community Services, consider an order approving the Marion County Children and Families Commission bylaws revision. And this is what we need to do first before we do the other action item we moved there. So Tamara, welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, I am Tamara Getch, Director of Community Services, and we are bringing before you this morning, for your consideration, an order approving the Marion County Children and Family Commission's bylaws revisions. For the public, Children and Families is a program of the Community Services Department, of which the Children and Family Commission helps the Board of County Commissioners become more informed about issues around children and families. So we have a membership of nearly 30 members that serve in this capacity, and this commission has been in existence since, I would say, 1990, if my memory serves me correct. And over those years, we've had incremental changes and changes within the bylaws that have come before the commissioners. And today is just another example of that, that as the commission, its focus, its role, and how it serves the community and children and families throughout Marion County, bylaws are needing to be revised. Today's presentation reflects the newest revisions in our bylaws, and I'd also want to mention, too, is that the document, as was kind of alluded to earlier, the documents that were in the packet on the website did not have the most, the latest revision of the bylaws. We have made a change, per legal counsel recommendation. You have a copy before you that changes the terms of a section in number 10 called Honorary Members, and Mary will talk more detail about that. But that change, and we'll have that uploaded as soon as possible, appoints members to a term of four years. Prior, it was listed as perpetuity so that they didn't have an end date, and legal counsel recommended that we have a term limit added to that. So that change is before you today. So with me this morning is Mary Graham, who is our program coordinator for this program area. She's been doing a great job, and she's going to be talking about the individual changes within the bylaws- changes within the bylaws, and, uh, then answer any questions you might have. Mary?
Thank you, Tamara and Commissioners. For the record, my name is Mary Graham, and I'm a program coordinator with Community Services. Uh, on August 18th, the, or the Children and Families Commission, uh, Steering Committee met to rev, and one of the action items was to review the existing bylaws, and from that, they recommended two changes. The first, which is reflected on page one, number six, is to cap the membership of the commission at thirty. So, we would retain the minimum membership of eleven, and then cap at thirty. And, and as a result of that discussion, they recognized the need for the, for proposing the honorary member position, which that allows past, past members of the commission who wanted to stay engaged, but didn't, weren't able to fulfill the attendance requirements and things like that, they could still stay engaged in the commission, but they would not serve as a voting member, and they would not count toward a quorum. So, they are still allowed to attend the commission meetings and actually speak, uh, to the, the things that are being discussed, but they would not be allowed to make a motion or vote, and as I mentioned, they would not count toward a quorum. Uh, the other thing which Tamara mentioned that, uh, is included as, is that the honorary members would have terms, and those terms would be four years, and they would be staggered. So, on September 15th, this was brought before the Children and Families Commission, and they reviewed those recommendations to the existing bylaws, and, uh, they passed, uh, that action, that they would like to bring that before you, for your consideration and approval. So, we request that the Board of Commissioners, uh, that they approve the order making these changes to the bylaws.
Commissioner?
Oh, I just wanted to say thank you for bringing this forward. We did have discussions, both with the leadership of the commission, and then with the full commission itself, about particularly the, I mean, people have joined the commission over time, its, uh, meeting schedule, its membership, uh, its, uh, amount of revenues or not, to, to be able to distribute to the community, its, uh, mission and focus have changed several times, really, over the past probably three, four years. And so, we have some people that serve on here, as Tammy was alluding to, that are, you know, that join for various reasons, they might be a state, representative of statewide organization, that we need to have their expertise. Uh, we have presidents of universities and representatives of universities, we have members from nonprofit organizations, and so, um, we were struggling a bit to make sure that we had a quorum for each of our meetings, and so, uh, and there were some people that had actually requested to be on the commission, and there were some recommendations from studies that people be added to the commission, so it really got us into a, a deeper discussion about, um, making sure that the people who served on the commission had a commitment to come every month, if they couldn't come, or every other month, however often we meet, if they couldn't come every other month, that perhaps there would be a way for them to continue to remain a member of the commission, and yet, at the same time, not count for the quorum, so that we could, they could come when their schedule allowed, but it wouldn't make it so that if they couldn't come, or didn't choose to come, that then our meetings would be compromised with the quorum. So, this honorary membership, and sometimes they call it ex officio in other organizations, is a, it's used a lot, and it's a nice way for us to be able to continue our relationship with some people that have served and have a, a commitment to children and families, but their schedules just don't allow us to make the, them to make the regular meetings. Um, and then having a cap on the membership, uh, I was so cer- certain we actually did have a cap, and then when we looked at the bylaw, sure enough, we had a eleven as the floor, but we've never had a cap, so the idea of, of kind of allowing us to say, well, this is the, the maximum number that we can have, and, um, uh, and then as positions free up, adding people, I think, allows the staff to manage those requests in a way that they haven't had the tools to do that before. So, I'm supportive of these two bylaw changes. Do you want me to make a motion to that effect?
Uh, well.
Or do you want to speak, talk about it first?
Before.
Oh, no, actually, it's Sam's turn to make motions, never mind.
I don't really have too many comments, I like the idea of keeping people that are interested, involved, and actually involved in children and families, I think that's a great idea. So, Chair Cameron, if I could, I would, but make a motion that we approve the order, uh, having to do with Marion County Children and Families Commission bylaws revisions as just presented.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, and just to clarify, um, we have a handout here that was updated versus what's on the web, uh, on the bylaws. Do we want to make sure we point out the?
I tried to in the motion, but if you want to clear.
Oh, okay. Right, I just.
That was what the as presented, or.
Okay. That's, just wanted to make sure that was clear. So, we have a motion and a second on that, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Thank you, Mary, thank you, Tamara.
And just to ask.
So, we have a second.
These will be posted, right, on, on the website?
Yes.
So, anybody that's listening that may want to see the latest version of that, that will be on your department website, correct?
Correct.
So, so our next action item, actually, it's still with you here, right?
That's right. So, that is taking the item as to appointing honorary members.
Right.
From the consent to actually, uh, requesting approval. So, uh, we have two individuals who have served as past commission members, their terms have expired, they have expressed interest in serving as honorary members, and so, the, uh, Children and Families Commission brings this before you for approval of the order. The two individuals are Denalda Dodson and Stephen Thorsett. Denalda's term would end on January 31st, 2017, and Stephen Thorsett's, uh, term would end on June 30th of 2017, and we, uh, would like to ask or recommend your approval for the order, appointing these two.
And if I may, um, I've had conversation with both of these individuals, uh, about this transition. Uh, they're thankful for this opportunity to transition into the honorary role. Uh, Stephen Thorsett is the president of Willamette University, and his travel schedule is quite hectic. Uh, we tried to get him to a meeting before the end of the year, but he was out of town every single time we had a commission meeting, so his attendance has been compromised by his busy schedule at the university, or for the university. And Denalda Dodson is a longtime professional in this community around early childhood, and even though the commission's focus is on youth, ages eleven to eighteen, and we're looking at family support efforts, uh, Denalda brings forward a host of experience and the importance of healthy early childhood development, and how that positively can, uh, have an, uh, impact on positive youth development. So, her voice around the table is really important as well, and we're thankful that, uh, this honorary position gives us an opportunity to keep both of their, uh, expertise at the table, and, and tap into them as need be in the future.
Okay, thank you. So...
So, Mr. Chair, I would approve the order appointing Denalda Dodson and Stephen Thorsett as honorary members of the Marion County Children and Families Commission.
I'll second that.
Okay, a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye? Okay.
Thank you very much, Commissioners.
Thank you for your work on this.
Thank you.
Bruce, thank you for clarifying what, the order we needed to go in. Okay, so I will read the calendar. Later today. What are you laughing about?
Well, it's just going to be a long day, that's all.
I know, I gave it a pause there, because it's going to be a long pause.
Yeah, and just.
Wednesday, today, at 6:00 P.M. It says six to nine, so at nine o'clock, that means we're done.
Right, that's not.
Right. It's probably going to be longer than that, but, uh, we will be there. Joint Public Hearing with the City of Salem Urban Growth Boundary, UGB Amendment, at the location is at the fifty-plus center, uh, on, at 2615 Portland Road Northeast. Just to clarify, it will be with the City of Salem, it will be with, uh, Polk County Planning Commission, Polk County, uh, Polk County Commissioners, Kaiser Planning Commission, and Kaiser City Council, and us. Be a lot of people. Okay, on tomorrow, the 13th, at 9:00 A.M., Mid Willamette Homeless Initiative Veteran Subcommittee, location Polk County Courthouse, eight-five-zero Main Street, Dallas. Also tomorrow, the 13th, 12:00 P.M., Family Building Box, Dream Builders Lunch, location Salem Convention Center, 200 Commercial Street, Salem. On Monday, the 17th, Calendar Review, at 8:30 A.M., here in the Silverton Conference Room on the fifth floor. On Monday, the 17th, 9:00 A.M., Management Update, Silverton Conference Room, here in this building on the fifth floor. On Monday, the 17th, 10:30 A.M., a work session on P-card Policy and Manual Review, location here in the Silverton Conference Room on the fifth floor. Um, Monday, at 4:00 P.M., Mid Willamette Homeless Initiative Task Force, location Kaiser Civic Center, 9:30, Chumawa Road, Northeast Kaiser. Tuesday, the 18th, at 8:00 A.M., United Way Breakfast, Old Community Services Office, Old Community Services Office. Oh, okay.
Where they used to be on the fifth floor.
That's up on the fifth floor, we're going to be doing a breakfast to raise money for the United Way on Tuesday, and that's a really good one.
Only got a number, right?
Bring your wallets. What?
So, the room probably has a number.
Yeah. Fifth floor, we'll, we'll find it, you'll smell it, just come on up. On Tuesday, the 18th, at 9:00 A.M., the work session, uh, for the Health Department, update on location, uh, in the fifth floor, in the Silverton Conference Room. Also Tuesday, the 18th, at 11:30 A.M., Catholic Community Services Luncheon, Salem Convention Center, 200 Commercial Street, Southeast in Salem. Wednesday, we're back here at 9:00 A.M., here in the Senator Hearing Room, and on Wednesday, at 2:00 P.M., the 19th, Willamette, Mid Willamette Homeless Initiative Support Services Education Subcommittee, location is the Silverton Conference Room on the fifth floor. Summarize your week.
Mostly good. First big storm's coming, will foul up my weekend, but there's alternative things to do. Regis Auction is one, that's a big event up in state, and every year, so may be able to attend. And I'm thinking, I'm still thinking about those, uh, those, the presentation the girls made, and.
Doesn't duck season open this weekend?
Thanksgiving is how I consider it, but legally, you're right.
Oh, okay.
Go look anyway. Might be a nice stormy weekend for it, wouldn't it?
I think, I think, uh, it opened last weekend, according to the Huskies.
Oh.
So, tell us about what we, what we didn't see when we had to leave you in the parks during yesterday. Salmon Falls, I heard.
So, you left, you left at the.
Bear Creek.
Bear Creek, yeah.
And, uh, we went up to Salmon Falls, um, the parking in Salmon Falls had been done, uh, the bumpers and all the design, the one-way design that had been done, uh, probably opened in July, uh, I think, um, according to Public Works, so that got done. The stairway, uh, they were building that, last time I went on a ride-along with Russ, last, whenever that was, last summer, they were building that stairway down, but they put a sign up the day before we got there, there were some signs that got put up the day before, if you noticed that, there was a lot of work that got done, we need to have more of these tours.
Yeah, well, I was mentioning that at home last night, and the suggestion was made by someone that I know really well, that maybe our next tour needs to be May or June 1st.
I just said in thirty days, we need to have a tour every thirty days.
So, it happens. It's like cleaning up the house.
That's exactly what it was.
That's right, it's Thanksgiving, got to clean.
So, um, the, the sign that said trail closed, in fact, I listened to somebody, they walked up and it said, danger, trail closed, and this, and the arrow was pointing one way, and they go, what does that sign really mo, and I'm standing in the back, and the next person walked up and said, what does that sign really mean? So, because they got up in a hurry, there was some confusion there, but Salmon Falls, and then remember we, remember we looked at the potential, um.
Expansion.
Up above, the expansion parking lot? Really, you would, you need to take a drive up there. It's, it's been open since mid-July.
So, that's something we have accomplished.
Oh, gosh.
Yeah, I heard that was good.
It looks really nice, so they've done a really good job on that, in fact, I gave Cindy a high five when we were standing there, because, uh, that got done, and, um, and, uh, if, if we could do that down at.
North Fork.
North Fork, and make it look like that, the order, they had bumpers and, um, parking, you could talk to Barb, Barb was there, too, she, she can give you a little more, even more details, she did the walk-around. Then we went up to Three Pools, um, the, uh, and, oh, there was a couple of places, we stopped at a bridge up above the golf course, and there's, there's access there, and my concern is, and I brought this up, they're, they're paving more access, or more parking areas, just because it's public right-of-way doesn't mean we have to pave, or, you know, allow for parking there. And it's in an area of the bridge, it's that new bridge that's further up, that got replaced a few years back, um, where we have a house on each side of the river, which have big complaints, and people walk down through their property, they get down there, so my concern is.
We might be encouraging it there where you really don't want to.
Right, how much traffic do we want to encourage versus restrict and, and force people into the parks, and, you know, some of those other areas that we've improved? Because, um, and I, and I heard this over and over again, with, with the Forest Service, with the BLM, and with us, how much pressure do we really want to encourage up in that canyon, right? And, and somehow come up with. So, we went up to Three Pools, um, and, uh, and then we had, um, a discussion at Giovanni's.
Now, that I hated to miss.
I know you did. There was all kinds of good stuff there, we talked about and enjoyed while we were talking.
Some extra was brought back, I'm pretty sure.
Uh, Barb had a box, I don't know where it is.
Okay, we'll find that.
Yeah. So, uh, the, the next steps are, um, there's kind of two, two things we need to do. One is our parks, uh, Brian and Russ, um, we talked about them going back and putting, with engineering, putting together, continuing, what's the plans and the next steps for the things they're working on, and then having a group with the Forest Service, Suzanne being a part of that BLM, and us, um, on the whole regional approach and what we do there.
So, are the, the times aligned, are we communicating with the public similarly? Can we have an electronic sign down the tux for everybody, and not just for one jurisdiction?
Yeah. It's, it's, I can see it, it's called, um, when you drive up there in the summertime, maybe you have this booth, and you have Smokey the Bear, and, I don't know, you have the National Forest Service, and you have the BLM, and you have the county, we have to come up with a logo that says, this is your park, or something, right?
See, I'm already envisioning you in a little kiosk with a purple pre-wrapped, welcoming everybody that comes up.
You'd have a beaver hat and a dog suit on.
It's going to be good.
I don't know how we do it, but the, the, and, and then, oh, the other thing we talked about, because, um, uh, who was it that wanted to go back up? Oh, no, it was, this was another issue, this was Greg Leo wanted to have another meeting with the north traffic people, and I said, well, we haven't done anything yet, we don't want to go back up there, but the other issue is, is scheduling in the spring, early, uh, another, I want to schedule another tour.
Right.
So, we have.
Before the season starts.
Right, before the season starts. And, and we don't all three have to go there, but if, you know, it worked out great yesterday, so you saw enough to know what we're talking about, and that's, you know, that's good. But, uh, have another tour in the spring, before the season starts, and schedule a time with the citizens, because what's happening up there, uh, Mark Farren is meeting with people and getting their input, and he has a different view than our engineering department. Like Cindy says, at this bridge, she says, I talked to that guy over there, and he says, he doesn't care, do whatever, he doesn't complain. These two people are on the side of the river where the people are coming, they haven't been talked to about the plans, and we just went out last week and paved or gravelled this more parking area, and it's right by their front gate. So, getting those citizens involved, and making sure they see our plan, and get their feedback, and, uh, their input, that process needs to be built into whatever we come up with. But I, I was pleased with the improvements that were made at, um, Salmon Falls, and that emergency phone got used, uh, just a week ago, there was a young man.
Bill.
That almost drowned, and they drove down and used that phone at, uh, Salmon Falls to call 911, and fortunately, he is okay. And fortunately, he is okay.
I was going to, you mentioned Mark Farren for people's benefit. He's a deputy that we have assigned, or the sheriff's assigned to be up there. And I wanted to make a public comment that it looks like he's doing a great job.
I was really impressed.
It made a big difference, and you can tell by talking to him that he's aware and involved up there and cares.
He is attending, they have, every two weeks, Public Works has these meetings about the canyon and the parks, so it's Cindy and all her people and parks. And he heard they were having these meetings, and so he's been going to those meetings every two weeks. And I said, did you invite yourself? And he goes, yeah, I kind of did. And I said, well, maybe, and he doesn't feel like there's this, still, he just says, I'm not even sure I'm welcome. I sat in a truck and talked to him. I'm not even sure if I feel welcome there, but I'm going to continue to go because they've got to work together. And he sees the issues and can relate them on a day-to-day basis on how that can, the signage and things like that where it should be. But, yeah, you're right. He's doing a good job.
And the other thing is, well, I know there were other issues, maybe didn't get all the pressure did the previous year, but we didn't, I didn't hear of the problems this year compared to last. So that's also indicative of the job he's...
Yeah. But two things. One, you're right, the drought and the heat didn't come like it did the year before where, you know, you had, this year you had a beach at Detroit or you had access to the lake so people could go other places. And then two, we were being proactive this year versus reactive.
Yeah. Well, and I think having Brian May on deck and his presence there yesterday, because he supervises that whole parks area, that's going to be a good addition to Public Works. And if he steps in and holds people accountable, helps move it forward, that's going to be a huge help for us.
Mark took Russ for a ride-along. I mean, so here you got the parks guy and the sheriff deputy, if they're riding together, they're talking about things together. So that's, that's really good. He did comment that Russ needs more help, and we had a temporary person for the summer, but that person got sick.
Left early, yeah.
So I think right now, putting out, and again, I don't know how our hiring process goes, but thinking come January, they start hiring somebody to start, you know, whatever it is, June first or May thirty-first or whatever their season is, and get a couple of college students or something temporaries that we can help and control. Because one of the things that happened that we realized up at the Forest Service, up at Opel Creek or at Three Pools, I asked Josh, I said, how many people do you have in this area on your busy weekends? He said, there'll be four or five of us. All my guys show up here, and they have uniforms on. And that's one thing I noticed, I mentioned, we don't want our guys to be looked at as police officers, because Mark says you don't want them looking like they're police officers, but to have it. Russ doesn't even have a park uniform. And to put some guys in some uniforms that, you know, at least there's some presence up there, that will help with whether it's, you know, the garbage or whatever, just having somebody with presence, and if they have a radio, they could call. If there's a problem, they can call the sheriff or whatever. But I think if they put that in their plan, and I'm hoping they will, to get that one person or two persons that's temporary just for those three months when we have the big seasons up there, to help Russ.
That's a good idea.
Yeah. They need it.
Say more presence.
Right. So, and those are types of things we can go to the citizens and talk about, and they'll be, the citizens up there, according to Mark, are very, very responsive. The elk, he gets along really good with the Elkhorn Corporation people. There's a problem on the other side, our other side of the business up there is like this with them. So we're making progress, which is good. I really was impressed, but the one place at the bridge where you guys, did you guys leave? You were at the bridge where they jump off bridge?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Didn't look any different than last year.
Did you hear my comment?
No.
I said, now, did we get an outhouse up here and trash cans?
Yeah, I heard you ask that.
Yeah, I said, well, I walked away under my breath and said, I got a couple extra trash cans at my house, you want me to bring them up here? I mean, how hard is it to get? And it's on the list. It was on the list.
Right, yeah, yeah.
So...
Yeah, I pulled in and I was looking, and I thought, oh, those cement barriers and the fence look real good. And then I pulled up my photos from last year, and I had a picture of the cement barriers and the fence that looked exactly the same.
It was picked up. Was that part of the getting ready for company thing? Because I didn't notice bash that was evident.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. There's no doubt that Mark told me, he said, in the last ten days, they've been working their butts off getting ready for this thing. Because that new pavement, that new rock over by the bridge that just went down, there were signs that had gone in, you know, just like, oh, the new, the Salmon Falls sign looked really nice, the new, the new design logo that was in there. And he goes, I wasn't here the last time. And so I asked Russ or whoever, I said, when did that sign, that new sign go on? He says, yesterday. So there was a lot of...
Well, that's so great.
Hey, if it gets done.
Yeah, just...
It gets done.
Be nice if there were people up there to enjoy it.
So we made some progress, which I'm good, and I'll get with Barb and set up another tour, get the tours and these meetings on the calendar, so we'll keep at it.
We'll have to go after budget so that it doesn't make everybody crazy, but usually we do budget around the first part of May, so if we were getting closer to Memorial Day.
Yeah. Oh, you mean on a tour?
Yeah, I'm just saying that we don't want to, we want to be careful not to use up a day that could be a budget committee day, so we'll have to coordinate and make sure that we're thinking about that. That's what I'm thinking about, timeframes, budgets always in May.
Maybe we could start at Giovanni's, so if a person had to leave, it would be a disaster.
Yeah, that was, right, I came back to the office and there was a box of, I don't know who brought it, but it was some pizza somebody had ordered that said, help yourself. So I had a piece of cold pizza just because I was wanting...
From Giovanni's?
No, it wasn't, but I just wanted to feel the Giovanni's experience somehow vicariously.
It was Giovanni's.
Was it?
Mark brought it back.
Oh, okay, well, then that's good.
For some of you, yes.
Yeah. Well, it's still in the refrigerator.
Oh, one house getting better.
There's three, there's three pieces.
No, there's not anymore.
Really? I put it in last night.
I'm...
You think so? Somebody just had pizza at ten in the morning?
Oh, yeah, my wife will eat cold pizza for breakfast.
Close this meeting, I have to go clean up my room because people are coming.
We're adjourned.